Okay, go that way.
Okay, welcome everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order of the regular meeting of the Oakmont Borough Planning Commission for April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. We'll start with a roll call. Matt Blackburn.
Here.
Steve Esposito.
Here.
Tony Rossi.
Here.
Christian Gass.
Here.
We also have our Secretary Bianca Lavador. We have our Borough Solicitor Kate Gerson. And Borough Manager Scott Fode here, and I'm the Chairman Jamie Joyce. First order of business is to review the meeting minutes from the previous meeting. So if everybody take time to read over and vocalize any corrections you might have.
The only question that I had was, did we have to have a motion on the the Richard Wall request by part sixteen by fourteen, ten street?
That was just a pre-application.
That's what I guess, that's right. Alright, I have a few things. You know, one, line fifty. Before we leave, we see on the plan to consolidate the, it should be lots, not cans.
Okay.
And then the other one is line sixty-one. Which, uh, says that we need to do it was which went on satisfying the ordinance. And the letter dated March twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three from LSSC and activation through the letter from the county, uh, reality, no, the term of real estate dated March twenty-first, coming twenty-two. So that was where all the corrections were already announced.
What was that date again?
Mark twenty-fourth.
Okay.
From Allagane County.
Department of Real Estate.
And Bielsa, anything they'd like to bring up? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes as corrected by the two comments that Steve just made.
Make the motion.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. But their meeting minutes are, are apparently manually out correctly. Scott, any correspondence or anything come in this week that we should discuss before we get to new business?
Nothing on the public court.
Uh, first order of new business is the Kumar Lot Consolidation Plan. I have an information packet laying in front of mine here.
The resident in Odrick at six thirty-five, Sixth Street. Currently, I'm just principal property where his house, what, houses situated on in the vacant lot next to it, which in this case would be about fifty-four. On the screen above, I haven't caught what's, what it looked like. Also want to show what it looks like from the county's mapping perspective. This is what it looks like from a Earth view. This is the principal residence. This is the vacant piece of property. Well, sandal and shit on it. The intent is to eliminate this property line between parcel C one eleven and C one sixteen to make it one contiguous lot right there.
Right. The only thing they have on there is the shed it looks like right now.
Shed, that was the existing shed.
And some landscaping, yeah.
Yeah.
Because they do have a heck of a lot already built out to the property line on the other lot.
Correct. Well, I mean, again, the, the county always give you cab out exactly where this, where this property line is located.
Yeah.
Um, because they don't correct, they'll do corrective survey to say here's parcels. This is more for recognition. But if you look here, you know, the pool is within the fire setback of look at the actual survey submitted by the site engineer.
Okay. So we do have a, uh, signed, I mean, Borough Engineers Report attached to your consolidation. Oh, I need some good.
It's kind of working here simply to five foot of a stream. The, uh, probably will have been here so I can get a schedule. Hopefully we can knock it out to bits. I expressed this, it was okay.
So it's interesting. It looks like the lot has already been consolidated. There's looks like they already consolidated lots fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six make called Lot One. And now whether we're going to add another piece?
No, I think fifty-six and fifty-five were once combined.
Well, that's, this is what let's propose.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I see the shed. Yeah, I see the shed.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the line where the, so essentially the property line that splits the, divides the swimming pool with the two-story structure, that was consolidated years ago.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So, so at one point fifty-seven, fifty-six, fifty-five, forty-four, fifty-three were all separate lots.
Yeah.
Those are really, they're.
Very many.
Oh, yeah.
Look at this map. Yes, they were.
They're twenty-five feet or something.
But you can see other neighbors around there did consolidate them below and above, above too.
Yeah.
Those, that's market, they're a lot.
Yeah, twenty-five foot lots, wow. Okay, I just want to quick, see what the Borough Engineer saying here.
Either the Borough did a lot like the scale was presented. That is a good issue, but it's a practice issue. We're still waiting on the town's planning review. They may have a similar plot, similar interest in being a better scale drawing itself.
Okay, yeah.
Except if they don't provide us much. We already look at.
Well, I don't have a problem with the concept. Does anybody want to discuss anything or have a problem with anything else than the scale of the drawings?
That's the only issue that this, that's the only issue with just scale, right? I mean, I, I certainly don't have any issues with this. It seems very reasonable. I just, I've never seen some small lots before.
Well, it's R three and there. Many of that's, maybe they thought they were gonna have adjoining townhomes and.
Yeah.
I don't.
I've never seen this really.
I know.
Yeah, I, I don't have any issue with the concept, I guess. Need to be in conformance, I guess, they would have provided another survey at scale. For another drawings.
These are, those are revising.
Yeah. It's sort of an issue.
So make the, kind of, plan for someone to take action, be moved to recommend preliminary and final approval.
Looks like the shed's over the property.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. It does look that way, doesn't it?
In the alley. And the wall.
It's funny, on the photo, it didn't seem that way, but I guess the photos is misleading.
Well, I ended up entertaining them to, to give them preliminary and final approval once they make the correction, commit the, the correct, the proper drawing. But anybody want to, uh, put that motion where and subject economy view too, thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Would you put that in his words there, Bianca? It will motion. Preliminary, final plan approval once they meet those two, the conditions of the accounting review and the, uh,
Drawing the scale.
The drawing the scale pointed out by LS. LS.
LSC.
Was it KU or L, LSS?
LSC. I'm gonna read what you have off when you, when you think you're done and then we'll I'll need a second on that motion.
Mister.
Oh, I second.
Okay. Matt second, okay.
Motion by Mister Esposito, seconded by Mister Blackburn to give preliminary and final approval intention on meeting the requirements of the LSSC report, independent county review, and the beginning of their requirements.
Yes. Alright, all those in favor? Uh, all those opposed? No one who passes? We don't really have any other new business, so we can drop back to some old business. Apparently, you started some discussion about the, uh, Fenday and recurring sound language. Um, I'm not sure if you were all here, but Steve's pointed out that he's seeing a different language on the online version. It was only reported as, and in our written version, we carry around, those carry around. They seem to be somewhat different, right, Steve? So.
We, not nearly as detailed on that.
I'm, I'm pretty certain that must be old because the, we, we spent a lot of time a few years ago, five years or so ago. I would say it's around August two thousand seventeen that we rewrote the fencing to make it a lot clearer because it felt that the one online wasn't understandable by a lot of people and we, we thought we're involved in a controversy of what constitutes a decorative wall, a decorative fence or a wall or a picket fence and things like that. So the one that we have in, in book here has all kinds of diagrams and pictures to make this a little bit more self-expanderatory than the general public, so that they understand what you're talking about. Um. Why, why?
I've never seen that before. I've been using it from the, I've been using, well, we have any codebooks since I've been here. So whatever that was written up as may never made it past, made it to ordinance, was I, because that I'm interested to see where that came from. Hmm. Let me be sure it's, or on, I'll be crazy, but I'll be sure that it's not fencing just for you know, related to, to that water, or is that, or is that for a lie?
If it was to be for a lie.
He said the section numbers are the same. It's actually different text in the same side numbers.
Oh.
Um, and I remember having that conversation. So you never maybe we're doing a little research. I didn't see what I have.
It looks like it will be.
We have to see images.
They do, they do start with the, with the overlay. Well, actually.
Right, we have the.
Yeah.
But in the actual text.
Oh. Because the way fencing is currently written in the ordinance, it's not a big, oh, sorry.
Even so, Texas. Like even this or this, but. We might have to do some research. I, I would start around that time. That, that seems to ring a bell. Well, revised two thousand and eighteen. We, so we are taking two thousand and fourteen away. We could find the two thousand and fourteen, four, five, we might find the old.
Think I'll read with some hearings. That is, like, in some way the old one, or about the one that's on the line is only three paragraphs long.
Yeah.
And what it says about five yards, I mean, the, the nice thing about the one that's in the door clearly shows that a part of that's three five yards. If you, if you read this ordinance, you might just think, like, one yard is the one along primary street, the other one is not. And.
Well, that explains something. Then maybe that's why we're seeing these, these problems around some of the current fences. They're, they're looking online and so is maybe their, their contractor.
Yeah, well, that's what we use for, 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 for. We're enforcing what the Borough Code is online.
That comes off then.
ECO three six three.
Right, so that would be, that would be the reason.
Look, right. And it, it's interesting. You see, if you're looking online, short-term rentals, like it has that added date, like anything that when something's amended and not dated online.
Yeah.
You'll get that notation. And we don't have that with us. So it seems as though, you know.
That's right, right after this. I read that. It's a very nice thing.
It is. But it's also interesting because that is dated twenty nineteen. It's included. It is included.
Is it pervade? Does it look right?
Hmm. What's the cover, it was covered over here that you're holding, Steve? Oh, Steve.
Well, um, dude, October two thousand and fourteen, revised two thousand and eighteen.
But maybe.
But now you found twenty nineteen updated there.
Yeah. Interesting.
What, what's after, um, short-term rents? Yeah, what's the next section? Three, two oh five, three fifteen.
When related.
Alright. How about after that? It's on store. Those are old. But not much.
Seems like part of the question is do we just need to make sure that what is in the, at the heart of coffee is not applied? That seem like, or do additional changes?
I'm speaking, talking about that. Change it, you know, but I'm afraid it's a little bit.
Let me ask a question. How, how did this subject about fencing come up in front of the panel? Nancy brought a, and that Lindsay always set an email to me once saying, thank you for working on all the parking. Probably the next thing we should work on is fencing.
Yeah.
You guys remember that? So all of a sudden you started working on fencing last month?
Yeah, I mean, I keep that's the issue.
Okay, so nothing came up that in front of us that we felt like.
No, I don't.
No. What is, Nancy, Nancy was here last month and we had like a short discussion about it.
She wanted us to turn our attention to something else after parking. So fencing was the issue. They must have felt there was a fencing problem going on and that we should address it.
And she referenced the property across the street.
Yes.
Okay.
Which was clearly on Pennsylvania.
Yeah.
On Pennsylvania, no, right. Because that um, there was one on Pennsylvania in fifteen when we were working on this. And we made that guy take his down. He, he cut his fence down and stuff because he, he was in violation. He took part of the fence down. Because, and we, well, right after we worked on this, he said, well, you got me to cut it out.
The corner lot there on Crystal.
Across from Crystal. Across. The corner line on Crystal has an open, open.
Yeah, they just redid the whole yard.
Yeah.
They just re-put it away there.
Yes.
And we want them, we want that property with, with, with Borough Code online because that's what we have. So that's why it's, it's more for high on the, on the floor. So it's, it's a front yard.
Yeah, and but this picture would have said he's okay. What he did is okay. But directly across Pennsylvania, that guy on the other corner at the fifteenth of Pennsylvania, he had a.
Next to the house of Dives.
Yes, next to the house of the Dives.
Which is a great idea for others.
So that guy had a full, full fence along that side yard, right up to the end, to the, right up to the end of the dinosaur house. Yeah, full fence. It's not there very exceptionally.
There is a fence that goes the whole way to the front. There is a fence that goes the whole way to Pennsylvania on that corner. I'm not sure if it's separating the fifteenth street house corner and dinosaur house. It doesn't, it doesn't run parallel to fif, to Pennsylvania, but there is, there is a fence that runs perpendicularly the whole way, basically to the sidewalk. But you don't notice it because it sits up. There's like a, there's like a flower bed and it sits up and there's a bunch of shrubs along it. Pretty sure there's a fence. I want to pass that every, every day.
Well, he might have, he might have cut it down. Maybe it's not six feet anymore. Maybe it's only four feet.
It only, it only runs perpendicular to Pennsylvania, not parallel.
Ah, okay.
Where I can offer.
Well, if it's perpendicular Pennsylvania, then it, it's not even the right. It's.
But it runs the whole way to effectively almost the sidewalk. Uh, it's been there for a long time too.
Okay.
There are a lot of fences here to predate even my arrival. That's what we, you know, I've heard here, we're going back and chasing after fences without permits and making, get their permits. Now we're working on actively is getting individuals to get permits for the fences beforehand, so we don't have this issue. As you mentioned before, the corner of ninth and Pennsylvania, that went all the way to zoning here and where they gave the ninth variance, the variance ones. The borough was an error for assuming those violations, but also that they couldn't keep the fence. And it was a zoning interpretation. Like, as I said, no. The, the enforcement knows we correctly sent it to the property. The D the fence has to be made to, but they kind of, I made it to property over next week to wonder how that's gonna happen. You know, the really common storyline because we gave all this, we gave all, provided all specifications of the Borough Code how to do it. And then for innovation, per report, and four, five years later, another contractor comes into the exact same property and issues a permit, yeah, for permission with the exact same specification, but doesn't meet your needs. That turned into a brutal headache, but essentially designing a board upheld which written in the Borough Code immediately right now. This wasn't adopted, but what was not adopted with the graphics. And there are graphics here because the Borough Code does show some graphics for, uh, site design or representation. As one of those, they, they make the problems. They just skip for some reason. They took fifty percent. And the detail, you gotta hear it.
Where, where, where did you find the site design sketches for, for the extension?
You gotta go under, um, it's, what? I've seen them before in other areas. Like solar panels is a whole section of illustrations.
If you're on the, uh, in the landing page, you should check, check, check.
I mean, I did, Scott, there's always a chance that this ordinance is adopted, but somehow got missed when things were sent to get updated online.
Absolutely.
So.
That, that happens.
Right, like.
But I'm, I mean, because actually I, I had this, I was sitting on the bottom pile of our cabinet over here and the folks can skip it, that's in case. But once I saw the cover, I just saw it was not even three weeks ago. Interesting. I'd like to read the details more about, you know, like the second, we're talking about the following materials are permitted. But, but it's consistent though that, you know, the height of the fencing, the final area of the separations, yeah, that's that's what we consistently know. We just never really got into the architectural detail what is considered acceptable when you point number two brick stone, the concrete, wood, picket, brail.
Okay. So, well, I guess in my opinion, having worked through it years ago, was that we thought we addressed this pretty adequately. We went to a lot of effort to address this. We thought we had a pretty good ordinance and I just assume that's, that's what the current ordinance is.
Well.
It might have never been kept up online.
It wasn't picked up online. This does go into more detail. Though I think we didn't help the front staff when they asked what residence called. These figures.
Yeah.
What it does not address, I think, is the bigger um, the overall paradigm. Can we, can there anything be to cook, to address corner limits? For essentially residents that own quarter lots that now have absolutely no privacy because they do not have any, any sign or they can put the fence upside down six feet facing the street or something. And maybe the answer is no, we can't start. For example, the vast, the kind of, the best of it, and there's others. Questions.
Well, I got printed. That's what I, alright. Uh, I, I have to look carefully at it. Like I said, at Ninth and Maryland, the only put it in the rear half of his yard, where, because he has a pulpit there. But in Pennsylvania and ninth, it's all the way up along the whole space on the school side. You know, if you don't leave down the back half of his yard and having company who's driving, maybe even dump out everybody.
Yeah.
Because it wouldn't be, not look like it was in his front yard. Even though he has two front yards, the whole, the whole side.
Also, that's immediately can split this location.
Yeah.
Right. Everyone drives past it every day when they drop their kids off at school.
There are no sweet trees on that.
There's no, no sweet notes and all, no trees around it to walk it out.
Well, the other one, I, 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 I when we wrote this, this elongated version of the fancy corner we were dealing with one of ten and Holton. The corner of ten and Holton, but a full size would, not a very expensive fence, a very cheap you know, Lowe's picket fence all the way along six feet high, along Holton. It was a core. Now it was ninth, ninth and Holton. And we ended up, they ended up taking that down. Ninth and Holton. There's new owners there. They got sheds and buildings. They had some people there online, so. But there's something new, different there. The people before, that's a long hole. It was so bad.
So philosophically, you mean, in the sort of perspective, you the ordinance is finally written.
Yes, we, I, I think it is if we go into it in great detail. If someone thinks we need to, we can, that's we still have a pretty.
It does cover a lot of the future. So maybe what we have is, they're not even able to get something on it.
Yeah.
Or, or, or really edited one, you know. Yeah, or, and of course, we may should too.
Yeah, and of course, with the, some fact, which apparently to, not really to, there is, but it's people using the website, they're not hoping to do one.
Right.
What, what's on the website? You would read it and be somewhat confused, not a lot of specificity.
Well, it's, hey, point A is what's on the website.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it. Nothing else. I mean, we, we do, do, we do we probably issued five or seven of fencing permits on the church. Good. So it's, you know, it's it's getting better at that point. Back. Maybe I'll sit back and see how we can get the rest of this in the, where it is. Right, I'm really, I'm busy where I'm trying to get this. Point number two is, is beautiful when it comes to whether the materials are permitted.
Yeah, and then.
This is a chain linkers, you know, not really pretty large. There was a standard, but that's not written in the Borough Code. Chain of thanks is off, rather than pretty large.
A lot of it was all based around what's visually attractive.
No, I agree.
That, that the street, street view, the front yards. And unfortunately, corner lots have two front yards.
Yeah.
Because they're visible.
That's what it is. Yep.
Okay. Okay, the only other thing I, I wanted to bring up, and then we can adjourn and go to your exact, it's second list.
It probably has to be published now. So the parking ordinance stuff, we.
Yeah.
What is that made into our books? They, they just, is that?
Yeah, we, when we send up the copy, did they edit it? Was it, might have, or no?
Sorry, that's okay. No, it, it is, uh, yeah, the council passed it, so.
Yeah.
As possible. No, it was, it was that, uh, I sent an email out about, um, that there's overlooked brownstones down at, at, uh, Brooks and Layers about they seem unusually high. And, um, I didn't come down to, to see Scott and try to find the original thing. But what it turns out to be is, it appears that it depends on what street they they're on. If they're on the urban street, it could be X high, they're on neighborhood street, they could be only thirty-five feet higher, something like that. So they seem extremely high. So not knowing whether that street along along, it's called First Street. If that's an urban street, then they're good. If it's a neighborhood street, then I question, they seem overly high. It could be the forty-five or thirty-five feet, depending on what the typology of the street is. But I wasn't able to come up with the street typology. I, I remember this one. They came to us to ask for extra, basically extra ceiling height. Um, or, and it added up to a few extra things on top. Okay. Well, they, they actually put a, a roof deck, like, yeah, a, a fourth story.
No, it was.
And they added six courses of block at street view. So now the first floor is five foot six above the streets. So when they, they came to us. So when they, they came to us, they were four stories, but they had relatively low ceilings, they needed an extra foot per floor. Okay.
But this is, this is.
Well, that's reading the panel now, you're right.
If you're, if you look on the screen, this is the, this is the upper level of the brownstone.
Right.
Looking down at the river. And that's when I looked, because I went, I said, now that, it looks, that's, it's a, it's a big structure.
Yeah.
But it's that way, as opposed to, with, and because this. This, these are the brownstones that you're looking at. This is the overhead view floor plan.
From, from the river. I was out on water, looking at it, I said, oh my god, they're building an apartment building in the wrong place. It looks like an apartment building is going up behind those big houses on the first street. Oh, they've got, that paid, that paid for the, here before the lots, and there's this apartment building on time, so then I got off, went down my bike, and looked at it, it's not an apartment building, it's these brownstones.
And that's what these are, right, this is the brownstone elevation.
Yeah, they, it looks like a really tall apartment building, almost as tall as Celebration, or that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so it did look completely, so then I thought, okay, they're, they're just too tall, but four story, that could, we, we probably didn't allow that, but it depends on. What street that street's called, if that's an urban street or neighborhood street, it matters by ten feet. So I wouldn't think. Rossdale Point, I would make that mistake, designing a forty five foot. Building on a thirty five foot street, they came in an aspect, right, yeah, but that was only a foot or two here, you know, on each floor, that might be three feet.
That's, I mean, it's like.
And then if you look at.
I remember, I, I remember seeing this um, uh, section. Front elevations, I think, is gonna make a difference. And they were gonna be tall anyway.
And now they, they have six courses of block up to the first floor. So there, there's five foot six alone. If there ain't any blocks, I'll, I'll send them, they're like, wait, wait, the first floor is actually by much. Like there, that sketch makes it look like they're, they're kind of, that's true.
Sorry, I didn't do that, I would.
So I, I was, I was just questioning, I didn't know, but. Because I didn't have anything in front of me, or I wasn't able to figure out what first street is, I need to go back to their original submission, but it said, these are urban streets, these are neighborhood streets, this is the boulevard, you know. We had all that typology stuff going on in the beginning. But, I mean, they're gonna be cool as heck, but they just look so big.
Oh, I think they would.
Yeah.
We'd take them out of my garage, you know, after they put it out one day, I'm like, oh my god.
Well, they seem, I mean, uh, points, you can bring this up at five or eight, because they seem to stop work, there's, there's no progress.
That's a way to get a little, you know.
Oh, they're very good, yeah. Oh, okay. Because I was gonna just let myself get in with a tape measure, drop it to the ground. I mean, there's no way there.
Wounded.
It's just, they're talking, it's like, new neighbors and all that, like, that. Where, where, they just seem so tall, they look to their, like an apartment building from the river. There's only three of them, maybe there's six.
Right.
Nine of them.
Yeah.
Nine of them.
But you see this, you see this, that, that could feature right here, where this chimney is, that is. That's this view. That's this view. So this wall here.
Yeah.
This wall is.
I see everything out there. So are you going through that revision sixteen or fourteen?
This is the sixteen revision, when we spoke specifically about setbacks for the brownstone.
Yeah, they were talking about the, the space, the open space in there, and.
Yeah, that was, um.
And, and there, what's that, what was that, yeah. That's the height.
Uh, that was the overhaul, that was one second.
There, what's that?
Eight.
Oh, no, that's something else. You know, I have to.
This is pretty.
I might have my heart in terms of my, my apology. Well, that's what I'm interested in.
Right away with. This was setback for me. Yeah, that, this was a modification.
Because as artists rendering, they want to show it real tall, there's no dimensions on it, artists rendering.
Stay up, yeah, you don't know what, you can't see what's around, right?
Right, but this is. This is the, this is the layout of all of, of the brownstones.
Right, and that's, that's the most recent one, because they have a wider one down the middle, the very central one got wider.
Yes.
We made some variances there, and then they gave us open space in the front of them.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's nice that they are set back off with. Front street, but my question was, what is that first street called? Is it a suburban street or a neighborhood street? Is it matters that if they're overhyped? I don't know what we're gonna do about it, man. They had three of them up already. Right, um, so we would have to. Go back to the original layout of the whole. Brooks and Laird.
Oh, I think, well, that's a super street for it, I suppose, which.
Yeah. Because, well, in here, we have. Typology, like you said, there's those. Spetches in the back, behind the charts.
Right, for, you know. Yeah, this is the, the land development plan, it, it has its own standards, basically.
Yeah, true.
Which is, would have been when they came in and asked to modify.
Oh, I see, that's it. That might be the borough, town, boulevard, urban, neighborhood, perhaps, okay. Well, I think it's the only thing would be to figure out what is, what is the first year, even like, called, calls other attention. Uh, what we're gonna do now, they've got three, three on the way out. Well, they're not. They just stopped.
If you make that one, well, they do, they have a good things, and. They're, they're, you know, one part of it covers three years, because they've done them all the time, and then they'll. Get it to a point of frame, and then that's important, it's like, you're shooting from that hat. You know, the, the channels, so.
Okay.
They don't. They're not ninety day homes, like you see some other.
Alright, well, I don't have anything else, since I want to bring that up in front of everybody, so we, we can think about it. I agree with Steve, they, they look out of place in a way, but the rest of them. From the river, Steve, you should see how they, how, they. They're gonna be fantastic to live in, yeah, they are not gonna be great for everybody else, then.
Yeah, are, are any of the other big homes up yet, I don't know.
Yeah, they, they got three started along, you know, the eleven. Feet lots, three are started, two, two are real far along, and one's just started this week.
I have a feeling once it fills in a little more, you're gonna notice it less.
But.
Plus trees and other things, all soften those.
Well, they, they will block everybody's view all the way back to the. Halfway up uh, Califor-, uh, you know, college and all those street, they're, they, they are so tall. You're gonna be blocking, now the neighborhood boulevards, and see it, and see it towards the, the community, they're really tall. And where's the apartment buildings, the bigger apartment buildings in the beginning? And the one I think by the river is gonna be a pretty enormous looking too. You know, the one they're putting in the triangle there, that's gonna probably look. Enormous now after a while, too, actually. That'll get softer, like, instead of trees, and setbacks, and, but it doesn't bother me as much, I guess, as you guys. Well. I thought it was the apartment building, it built the wrong place. I don't like that. It's, it's, it's a apartment building, it's on the river. Are you gonna imagine, I can get, get off the river, and go, go a lot down there, see what's going on?
What's that?
They did build an apartment building in the wrong place.
No, it's, it's, no.
No, but since they did.
They did.
Okay, that's, so, that, or they come before us for the barriers. Very expensive situation, I suppose.
Okay, well, I don't have anything else, if, if you can, I'll take a motion to adjourn to be, if anybody else has anything they want to discuss. Uh, maybe someone does. We go good, okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
I, I.
Just to note, for minutes, for adjournment to executive session. For a legal.